I'll call this meeting of November 10 to order. And Dr. Cash will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand. Ready, begin.
We're going to notice you're going to be able to hear Spanish. We have the headsets for the hearing impaired. If you need them, please contact one of our staff. Dr. Cash, introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions, and your superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Heron. With us this evening to provide the student board report is Arande De Silva, the junior class secretary from San Marcos High School. Welcome.
My name is Arande De Silva, and I'm here in place of our student board rep, Chloe Stevens. So to begin, we have LaCuesta. Their students, parents, and staff are taking the one-to-one iPad survey for the pilot program through November 20th. In addition, the leadership is creating a thankful turkey door decorating contest for the week prior to Thanksgiving vacation. Dos Pueblos High School will be hosting their upcoming blood drive, November 19th, 7:45 a.m. until 12 noon, in the cafeteria to help support the Tri-Valley Blood Bank. They will be having a canned food and toy drive, November 9th until December 16th. The food will be shared with the Food Bank of Santa Barbara and the Unity Shop of Santa Barbara. The toys will go to Community of Friends, local Galita grade schools, and the Unity Shop of Santa Barbara. Food Day, November 13th, will be hosted to expose students to healthy and local options. On-campus groups, school district food, and local farms and organizations will all be represented. The all-school LIPDEV will be rescheduled for December 18th. This will be a spirited video of students singing through the halls lined with other cheering students. The leadership class will be representing Dos Pueblos at the Holiday Parade, December Santa Barbara High School will also be having their annual blood drive, November 10th, for students who are 16 and over to donate. Their annual holiday gram sales to fundraise is commencing for the senior prom. And the Peabody Stadium restoration is expected to start at the end of November through mid-December. And lastly, San Marcos High School. The Laramie Project will be opening up this Thursday, November 12th, at 7:00 p.m. The show will also take place November 13th and 14th at 7:00 p.m., and they will also be having a November 15th Sunday matinee at 2:00 p.m. This important play examines the impact of homophobia surrounding the murder of a gay person in Laramie, Wyoming, back in 1998. The Tectonic Theater Project traveled to Laramie the months following the attack and over the course of a year and a half, conducted over 200 interviews, meeting the people of the town who were affected by the murder. These interviews were collected, transcribed, and configured in order to create a play that explores the vast expense of human emotion in reaction to this hateful crime. The Health Career Academy will be hosting their blood drive this Friday, November 13th, to benefit the Tri-County's Blood Bank. The San Marcos Marching Band and Color Guard, San Marcos Cheer, and Kids Helping Kids will all be participating in the annual Holiday Parade on December 4th. The annual Penny Drive will be taking place from November 30th to December 18th at San Marcos to benefit the Santa Barbara Unity Shop. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Well, yesterday, we celebrated the opening of Washington Elementary School's new library and science design room, as well as the new parking area. The library, as you know, is a beautiful facility, and the parking lot project, both are tremendous assets to that school and the surrounding neighborhood. We obviously want to thank our community for enabling us to plan and implement improvements such as this as a result of the Bond Measure R 2010. There's a handout in the back of the room about this project, if anyone's interested in more specific details. As was just noted by our student board report, we're in the midst of fall performances. Pippin started last weekend at Santa Barbara High School, as well as the Laramie Project starting this week. We also have Peter and the Star Catcher, which is the prequel to Peter Pan at Dos Pueblos, and that starts on Friday and continues through Sunday. Additional information on all of these performances is available at the back of the room and on each high school's website. A reminder that our schools and our district office will be closed tomorrow for a very important day. We'll be remembering veterans. And we want to thank all of those currently in our audience and who served our nation, and remember those that lost their lives. This Saturday, November 14th, is a really cool event that's happening at Lacumbra Junior High School. It's the TEDx Youth Day. San Marcos High School's Entrepreneurship Academy is hosting the very first TEDx Youth Event in Santa Barbara. The event is part of the district's iLearn initiative, and the festivities are free for anyone that would like to go. And it's a day-long event. It will feature world-class speakers, simulcast from New York. There will be local sponsors, activities, and lots of great prize giveaways, including an iPad, Sono speakers, skateboards, local gift certificates, lots of great stuff. Our district would really like to encourage all middle and high school students to attend, and the theme is called "Future Ready." And the speakers will be scientists, artists, technologists, and of course, all of them innovators. And the event is free, but we're asking anyone planning to attend to register at tedx youth santa barbara dot com. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Any questions, board? Board comments and correspondence? Ms. Adelson?
I just wanted to mention, I had the pleasure of attending the college night at Earl Warren on November 4th, and it's where many, many colleges from across the country, UCs, CSUs, and Santa Barbara City College are all there, and many private schools, with many of our high school students walking around, all 9th through 12th, and really good opportunity to visit with some of the representatives, so I enjoyed that.
Others? I'll go through a few. I attended at Franklin School a Beethoven Immortal Fall Concert. I can't put it on, about 100 students of various instruments you can think of, all grade levels. To see what's happened in four years to that music program at Franklin is just unbelievable. It's so good. Dia de los Muertos, the Adelante fundraiser at Delia Plaza. Once again, year after year, it succeeds and it gets better every single year. It's a great family organization, a time for the families to get together. I was really fortunate to go to Just Communities, i.e. Presentation Day. I've been to several of them, and to see these groups of people who come together and end after five days with a plan for where they're going to go and where they're going to go forward. And Dr. Drady was there and gave a great closing argument for the benefit of everybody. But what I saw happening, and it's something I learned in my business career 25 years ago, a book, A Better World, A Better You. And what I saw coming out of these groups was time and time again, it made them a better person. And you make yourself a better person, those around you are going to be better also. And it's a common theme that I saw take place, in that everybody was talking about what it meant to them, how it changed them, and that's going to be a powerful change in our schools because of that. So it was a great experience to watch these presentations. Obviously, the Washington Library, 17 years later, 17 years later. Thank you, Ms. Parker, for your dedication over the years to make sure that we followed through on our commitments to the voters, even though it was 17 years. You still probably are a major part of that. And to sit down, there was a group of students in the theater area that you can sit, and I just wandered over and sat down with them, and all of a sudden, the conversation just went on and on and on. These kids just kept me going. It was just a wonderful experience to see that communication going on with these kids about their whole life at school, and what their life's going to be in the future. Five kids, I think five or six, it was wonderful. The Adelante Board Meeting took place. They're really excited about their portables. Hopefully, the portable will start, the two new portables will start going in after the school year. They now have 270 students. And Mr. Hat Young, you'll be happy to know that I also visited, because of, Adelante's so happy with you doing that, that's great, but I also went to Peabody School and met with Damian, and he toured me around their building and was very, very emphatic in his praise for meeting on a regular basis now with you and Steve Isilone, and how the communication with our facilities department and Peabody has been increasingly better and better all the time. So thank you, Mr. Hat Young, for making sure that takes place. Thank you very much. And I have had two correspondents from people, special education, that we'll talk about later for the preschool and the other programs. Thank you. The announcement of closed session item, there's nothing to report. Public comments?
We do. We have two public comments. The first is Jay Bishop, and is on the, talking about the Outdoor School and Rancho Alegre. And you have three minutes.
Thank you. For three minutes, I appreciate it. My name is Jay Bishop, and I am the Education Director for the Outdoor School at Rancho Alegre, and a lot of people know me as Blue Jay. Currently, as we stand right now, the Santa Barbara School District and none of the Santa Barbara schools go to the Outdoor School anymore, and I would like to officially invite you guys to come back. We are going to be making the new schedule for the 16-17 year at the end of March, and so if the policy is going to be changing, and maybe if the schools are potentially going to want to be coming back, then you want to start filing paperwork by March 25th. I like to say that it's a little bit sad to know that a lot of the schools didn't come this year, and every time I have an interaction with somebody, they find out where I work and what I'm doing, I almost always have a reaction of, oh, I went there, or I know somebody who went there, that place is great, and that's pretty much what flows out of there all the time, our public comments and evaluations about how great our program is, so we'd like to have you come back. And right now, as it's, I talked to some people in here today, and even people were saying, oh, yeah, I went there when I was a kid, but not if you were a sixth grader this year. So we'd like to remedy that. We'd like to get you guys back. If people want to contact me, you can go to theoutdoorschool.org and send an email to the Education Director. And if you have questions about things like Common Core or next generation science standards, I can answer all of those for you, and also too, it's, I feel like it's more than that, though. It's an experience that all Santa Barbers can kind of pull together with, 800 kids a year or more, potentially have thousands of children come through our program that all have this unique experience that they share together within this community, and I think it should continue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Dr. Lanny E. Bundstein.
Members of the board, Dr. Cash, it's a pleasure to address a few comments to, under public comment. And I was delighted to see that the Washington project has finally been built. That was passed when I was a member of the Board of Education, so, and it went long ago in a different millennium, and it is a good positive thing that it has finally gone forward, and that is a real positive tribute to the district. There was an item on your consent calendar that I wanted to speak to, but I thought I would do it in a little more general manner under public comments, and that's the Peabody Stadium project at Santa Barbara High School. And, you know, my feeling is that, as someone who's been involved in these issues for many years, is that at this point in time, just sort of the word in the community, to the extent that there's a word, is that there's emerging issues on street abandonment with the city of Santa Barbara. The CEQA documents that you're going to be considering later this evening is a process, I think it's a 30-day process for a report, and then 15 days for a further report that would be for negative declaration or mitigated negative declaration, and then 30 days for review after that, which would mean, you know, that's 75 days from the start of the process. So it would seem like it would be difficult to go to bid for at least 75 days, or with the holidays and so forth, probably about another three months, which would be something like early to mid-February. And so I want to say that I think it's terrific that Dr. Cash and Mr. Hat Young have, I know, had many meetings on Peabody Stadium, and the goal, as Dr. Cash has said, is this is going to be one of the major capital facilities in our community for many years. And so I would just encourage you to think, is there a backup plan if something goes wrong? And particularly, once you start to get into CEQA and other issues, the point is, those are processes that can take longer than you think, and I just, so I want to make that as a general comment, as something you may, you may want to consider. And I just wanted to say, too, that I'm a big backer of Rancho Alegre in terms of, when I was a kid, I spent over a year of my life up there, working, and I believe that the reason why the district opted out was because of the Boy Scouts policy on gay leaders. Is that, is that not accurate? Okay, well, it didn't have anything to do with it, because that's changed now, and it's something that I think that that's positive, and if that's of any relevance. But it's something that Rancho Alegre is, it recently celebrated its 50th anniversary, and a number of people were up there for that, and kids have been going to that camp since the 1960s, so it's something that would certainly be good to consider again if you're able to do that. Thank you very much.
Is that it for public comments? Okay. Go to item F, Acceptance of Donations from November 10th, 2015.
Move to Accept the Gratitude.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously. We'll go to the consent calendar. Are there any to be removed? Dr. Paz?
I have to recuse myself from Human Resources recommendations. My wife is on the recommendations, or we could approve the whole list minus her.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda minus item G5.
I'll second it.
Under discussion, just one comment, I just want to point out, under the student field trips, under number, item G2, once again, there is a field trip to Mozambique, Africa, and India, just to point it out that those are unique. If anybody has any questions on those, we can pull it up for later, but if not, we'll conclude it. All those in favor of consent calendar, with the exception of item 5, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously. Do you have a motion on item 5?
I move to approve the Human Resources recommendations.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Yes.
Four in favor, one abstained on G5. We'll now go to the action item, H1, Board Action on Student Discipline Education 2015-16-02.
In case 2015-16-02, I move to approve the findings and recommendations the hearing panel for an expulsion with enforcement suspended for one school year.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Board Action number, and H2, on case 2015-16-03.
And in general, I think, you know, in years past, we would put these under one item, and I really think it's okay for us to do that, instead of having them out as separate items.
Okay. Make a motion for the next three.
I, I, I feel like since it's on the agenda right now, if that's okay with you, I'll do, I'll separate them out. In case, for H2, in case number 2015-16-03, I move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel for a full expulsion for one school year.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
And in item H3, I move to approve the recommendations of the hearing panel for 2015-16-09, for an expulsion with suspended enforcement for one school year.
I'll second it.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously. Under H4?
And for that one, case number 2015-16-10, I move to approve the stipulated agreement for a expulsion with enforcement suspended for one school year.
I'll second it.
Under discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously. H5, Approval of the Significant Cognitive Disabilities SCD Program Transfer.
So this matters back before you, after being on the conference agenda at our last, at the last board meeting. Staff is here, available to answer any questions. Board members may have.
We have two speakers on it, I believe? More than two?
Just two.
Just two. Want to hear the speakers first, board? Yes.
You have three minutes.
Okay.
I'll try to give you a 30-second warning.
All right. I'm not going to take three minutes, but I should be real quick on this one. Leslie Sanderson, I have a son who's at Galita Valley Junior High in the special education program there. I just want to mention on this particular topic, I'm familiar with all the kids that are in the county program, they go to the same school. I've, I'm familiar with their aides, their teacher in that program as well. It's a good program, the county programs are good programs, and I'm not overly opposed to having Santa Barbara Unified take over these programs. The problem is, is our current program is not fully staffed as far as instructional assistants. It's November, so if we can't fully staff our current programs, we just started having APE at the end of October, then how are we expected to be taking on all of these new programs? I think we should at least be meeting the obligations to our current students and their current IEPs before we start taking on additional programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jennifer Griffin.
Hey, everyone. Jennifer Griffin, shorter than the last person. So I'm kind of in the opposite situation, but still have pretty much the same thing to say that Leslie did. My son, Theo Apostolopoulos, who is the noisy guy in the back, he is in the county program. He's been there since preschool. It's been, it's really worked out beautifully for us, and we couldn't have been happier with the staff and the teachers. And it's been great being on the Galita Valley campus, because it's so nice to be right next to Leslie's son's class. But, and I understand that, you know, you're going to be recruiting for specific positions, and my concern, and I know that it's shared by some of the other families who are, who are having to make this big change, that, that there isn't an availability of qualified assistants and nurses and therapists. And I just, I want to be more confident that all of these positions will be filled and ready when the school begins. You know, every year, I've always heard from other families who have kids in this district and other districts, that, you know, they're not fully staffed, or we don't have enough aides, or that they're not well-trained. And I've always, you know, I've always felt very lucky, because most of our instructional assistants didn't leave, and, you know, some of the therapists did over the years, and we've had, you know, our ups and downs with that, but our kids have, they're in that program because they have, it's pretty specialized, and they do have a lot of, you know, they have some significant medical needs as well. Theo has a lot of seizures, and he has them daily. So that's, obviously, safety is, you know, a big concern of mine. But also, he has an IEP, and he has goals, and we, I want, you know, qualified people to be helping him to try to meet those goals as well. So it's really just, you know, I'm concerned that, that we'll be transferring aides from other programs in the district. I know they're going to make these positions available to the current instructional assistants and teacher and all, anybody else in the regional program that wants to continue on, but if they choose not to continue, then I have no idea what the training is like, and, you know, if they're familiar with things like G-tubes and trach tubes, and his teacher was telling me that, you know, she had aides who could change artificial limbs. I mean, it's really, some of these really exotic things that you may not be experiencing right now in the district. So, you know, I just wanted to put it out there. I know I can't get any reassurances right now, but I do want to be closely involved and consulted whenever, you know, anybody wants to get my opinion, I'm always willing to provide that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Does staff have anything to say at this point, or?
They're available to answer questions.
Okay. Questions?
Well, just comments. I want to say thank you to Ms. Sanderson, both for getting up and speaking now, but to both of you for speaking, but also because you sent us a very detailed email that was quite helpful, and others have, Ms. Eichelberger, for example, has given us some questions too, you know, things that'll come up. And the staffing is a big one. It's, it's, it's an issue with us every year, and because the county program wasn't our program, you know, I don't know that we would know how challenging it's been for the county or not for the county. And that might vary from program to program for them as well, I'm sure that it does, and from year to year for them. So what can you say about our capacity to hire, since we constantly have that issue in special education?
Yeah, I can say that we do work with the county pretty closely on a number of programs, and I know that they're facing the same challenges that we are in terms of always having staff and filling vacancies as quickly as possible. We're all sharing the same subpool in this county when you're going to find kind of stopgap solutions, so I don't feel that we're unique in that. I do have some awareness of some places where they're looking to add staff, but I don't really want to get into a detailed conversation about their programs. I would just want to point out that if it's the district's goal to serve our students, this issue is always going to be an issue. You know, at some point, if we're going to take a program back, there's that unknown, which, which staff will come over and work for us, and it really is not something that we have control over. So outside of going out there and meeting with those folks and encouraging them to come and apply and welcoming them, it is something that we know is kind of up in the air at this point. So I know that just from our standpoint, it is a priority to staff those classes, and they are students who have the most significant needs in the district, so we would make that a priority.
Others? Dr. Paz?
I mean, I think that the last time this brought up, I had less concern about the staffing, but I have more concerns of staffing now, part of which is that, you just said it, it's the unknown, you know? We don't know how many people are from the county program would come over to staff. I mean, that's something that's the reality hitting us in our face, you know, and it's this close, hasn't hit us, but once we take over that program, then we'll know fully if it's going to be a big slap or a small slap in the face. And so that's something to really think about in terms of all this, because I think, you know, in any organization, you're always looking at how much capacity does staff really have. I go with faith that you guys know what you're doing, but at the same time, we as a board have always discussed taking on more, and I think part of the thing about that is not making the decision that we're going to come back to as a board. making the decision that we're going to come back to as a board, or that we as board members are, are sort of, in, in putting in a position, a future board to have to make a decision about changing something when we made that decision. So I think that's a big concern for me as we kind of move forward in terms of all this. I'm, I'm, I'm a little lost as to how to remedy that, and kind of find a solution for that, because we're relying on you all. And that's, that's still an issue for me, I don't know if that's going to be resolved, even if we were to say tonight, let's go forward. Because I think staffing as an issue around special education has been a concern not only by the board, but it's been a concern expressed by parents often. And it has to come up to us as a reality, that we have to address it with the community and try to find a way to, to address it, to, you know, lessen those concerns by people in the community, by parents in particular, because they are the constituents that we have to respond to, and they're the group of people that we have to make sure that we are serving the best way possible and not, and not missing a beat in that whole process. So I'm, I'm still, I'm unsure right now at this point in time.
Ms. Limon?
So, my, my thoughts are consistent with what I said last week, and, you know, I've kind of struggled with this, I really have. I know that the three of you, Dr. Cash, wouldn't be bringing this forward unless it was vetted, we've been talking about it for a year, the pros, the cons, everything's been considered, and that, that is a good thing, and I know we're not taking this lightly. I watched what happened when we took back the, what is now KESAL program, and I saw better things happen than what I knew. And so I think of like, wow, there could be real potential here, it could be better. But you, you know, it's been alluded to, the unknown, and I brought up capacity last week, and I'm still struggling with it, because in my mind, you are all a department that's doing a lot, and that's been the history of this school district, that the department does a lot of really good and important work, and it's hard. So I'm struggling with this, and again, it's consistent with that, but I, you know, and it's bit, yeah, it's just hard, because I know you all wouldn't have brought it forward. You've been talking to me about it, I know I've had conversations with you individually, and I, and I've struggled with this. So, yeah, we're in a hard place, but let me ask one question. If this were not to move forward, what, what is the impact and consequences of this not moving forward tonight?
I think the impact would be that we would not be serving our own children, and that's what we've always wanted to do. But I, I did want to comment on the capacity, knowing that we don't, the unknown that Mr. Shetler was alluding to is who's coming over, but there will be someone coming over, because if they don't come over, then what happens is they don't have a job with the county. So there, for me, the capacity's going to be there. The other piece is if I remind the board that we did take back the OT, and again, there was unknown. The OT have embraced, we have embraced them, they have actually worked with our gen ed teachers, giving them intervention strategies to help all children. So that is what we're missing, and bringing back our children and working with the staff, and they become a part of our family, and that we can serve. And I know it is the unknown that, that is challenging with everyone, but we are very confident, we have nurses that are very qualified, we have LVNs that are qualified, we have our teaching staff, we're going in year three that we've been training the last three years. We have been training the para-eds for the last three years. So we are moving forward, and we're hoping that we can. The consequence, I would say, is that we're not able to serve our own children.
A couple technical questions. Thank you first for redoing the one document that didn't make sense to me last time, and now it does, so thank you for doing that. I was asked, why are we taking on programs that cost so much? I know the answer to it, but can you make sure, you tell me the answer too? I mean, in one case, it's $551,000, the other case, it's a million four.
Well, I can answer that question, we're taking on those programs because what we will be, what we are currently spending is more than what we would be spending.
Yeah, so it's not, the fiscal impact is not $551,000, because it's offset by an expense we already do.
What we currently pay the county.
Yeah, so it's not an additional sum of money that could be taken out of our, our funding.
That is correct.
I want to make that clear, because that's been asked of me, because on the surface of the documents, it seems like we're spending more money.
Ms. Allison?
What is the current amount we're paying the county, do you know?
For this program, I don't have it in front of me. Our purpose in this was really to, our purpose here, we, our purpose is about programs for our kids. It's not about whether we're saving money, I can tell you that we won't be spending more money.
And I, I understand that the overriding reason for doing this is to serve our own children. But let me just ask my technical questions. On the document, it says we're going to serve, estimated fiscal impact is 20 students, where the document talks about 10 students. Are we projecting they're going to have more in the future? It says there's five at-
No, 10 is the accurate number for those two programs.
But it says in here, it's going to be 20 students for $551,000.
Yeah, that's a typo.
Because it was on, it was here last time too, so, so it is 10 students.
It is 10 students.
Okay. That's on the bottom of one of two. And the same thing, I don't know, that's, I think that's, that's off of this one. And so let me just make sure I understand, because there's a lot of concern, and there's been concern about special ed since I ran for office eight years ago. And we've been through some very strenuous times. I can say in my opinion, we are a thousand times better today than we were eight years ago. So I'm fully, fully believe that we're doing a much better job. That doesn't mean there aren't still people who have problems. And we're fortunate in that, that we have several lengthy letters that outline, outline those concerns and problems. Dr. Cash has received one of them, I have another one that I'll turn over to Dr. Cash after the meeting. I, I'm not going to sit here and ask every single question on there, some are personnel, some are private, it's just not appropriate. But I'm hoping that when Dr. Cash sees it and talks to staff about it, that we will recognize that there are still problems out there that need to be looked at and addressed, short of another FICMA report, which I hope we never have to do again. I would hope that we take a look at them and, and see if there's a way to allay the fears and to make this program really serving the students. One of my questions was, how can we do a better, how can we do better than SB CEO in terms of inclusion, aides, training, long-term staff? I presume we're doing this because we think we can do a better job, and I'm just curious, can we do a better job?
Yeah, I can speak to that. I was out at the Dos Pueblos and the GV program earlier this year, and I talked to the teachers about how many of their students were attending any of our gen ed classes on those campuses. And the reply that I got was very few, and I asked them, what is the process for getting a child into those classes? And it's, you know, beg, plead, offer gifts, that sort of thing. So I don't think that we would have to go through that if they were Santa Barbara students in a Santa Barbara program. I can tell you, as a previous teacher of moderate severe students in our district, I didn't have to go through that to get my students in classes. I think that barrier exists in part because they're viewed as a separate program, separate kids, and that's really not in alignment with our, our vision.
Thank you. A follow-up question, is the safety of our children at risk with our taking over?
No.
Okay. And are we now fully staffed with aides?
No, we have vacancies in the district. And relative to the county, I think we employ around 100, and each of these programs has plus or minus, I think in total six between the two classes. So with 100 staff, we will probably always have some turnover.
Okay. Other questions? Ms. Parker?
Not a question so, so much, as I appreciate all this, and I appreciate the scrutiny from the public and the scrutiny that you're getting from us on this as well. I'm certainly willing to go ahead and move to approve the significant cognitive disabilities program transfer, and I'll go ahead and make that motion, with the caveat that I just, I think it's important that we keep up this level of scrutiny and come back next fall, and, and I'm just going to formally request right now that this time, even earlier in the year, maybe by October, that we just have a, a meeting where we talk about how the transition has happened, what the staffing levels are like, and that we just have that in a public setting, so that we can all give input and hear about how the transition went.
Yeah, we welcome that.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Under discussion? I'll just comment one more time, that I agree totally to serve our own kids, and we'll be watching that we do it better than SB CEO. That'll be the challenge, but that will be also the proof that we know what we're doing, and we trust you. And I think, I would echo that we're doing it because of the three of you and Dr. Cash, trusting that you've done the background work and fully committed to go forward, and that this will be a program we can be proud of in the future. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Listen, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. Three in favor, two opposed? Motion carried. Two opposed, Ms. Limon and Dr. Paz. How about H6, approval of taking back the county preschool program?
Mr. President, this item is again back for action, staff is here, ready to answer any questions.
I feel like it's, it's kind of a lot of the same issues that were in the previous one, and so I don't have any questions on that.
Ms. Limon?
I'll just comment on where my vote's coming from. I think this is, I hope that it's understood that there is a lot of respect for the work that all you are doing. I know you wouldn't have brought this forward, but I've been struggling with, with this for some time, and I feel like it's important for everyone to recognize that despite all the information I have, I'm still struggling. So my vote for both of these items is not a function of what you are doing, or the fact that you haven't done enough, it's simply a function of my sense of unease with the uncertainty. So I want that to be very clear, I have a lot of respect for the process, but, but that's just where I'm at. It's not a personal thing, it's by no means a reflection of anyone not holding high standards or doing a good job. It literally is about me being very uneasy, after I've had one-on-one conversations with Dr. Cash, with Ms. Rodriguez, you know, I studied the issue. So I just, I want that to be clear, that it's not a reflection of any program, of anyone, but just my unease with this and not knowing. And so, and that's why I've struggled so much with making this decision.
Other comments? Dr. Paz?
For me, it's, it's just, we're coming back to the same things, and for me, it's a struggle. It's like, I, I look at some of the issues that we're dealing with, and then I hear with, through public comment, or, you know, interactions with parents, and we're still struggling with the same issues. And for me to vote to approve something that I feel like we should have made some progress, and it's, again, I know it's a two-way street, all of the work that you do is not without recognition, but at the same time, it's, it's a struggle for me to, to approve something where I'm finding myself, I just feel like there, there, there's something we're not necessarily catching, and it's still coming back through the parents in terms of their struggles and their, their feeling of frustration. And I think that is the big piece for me, that I can't approve something in my own way of looking at things without feeling like we're responding to parents. And I know this is all done out of love for the kids that we're working with, I mean, your, your comments very much appropriate, Mr. Shetler about, you know, looking at kids and wanting to serve them and not being treated any different, that's very appropriate. But I still see the, the struggles from all the comments I receive from parents and the interactions that I have, and I'm still struggling to, to find a way that, that, that addresses their concerns, acknowledges them, and not to say we haven't, but I don't think we have done as much as we possibly can. And I include myself in this, in this regard too, as a school board member, because I think when I hear the same things come back and come back and come back, it's like, what are we not doing? So that's where I'm coming from.
Ms. Parker?
With that, I will go ahead and move to approve taking back the county preschool program, again with the understanding that we will meet again in October and talk publicly about the transfer and the status of staffing and progress.
I'll second it.
Under discussion, may I make a couple questions or comments?
Uh-huh.
Okay, thank you. Again, a technical question, as I understand this, it's a two-year process, and it, on one page, it says we're going to have 54 preschool kids in 2016-17, and then 17-18 jumped to 123. And currently, it looks like there's 97. Do we expect an increase in the number coming under our program than currently in the program over the next couple of years?
Potentially. It's, it's actually, we're looking at a, a three-year program, with this school year being the first year, we would start, start the assessments in January, in the spring, and then 15, or 16-17 would be the second year. And so we anticipate doubling the number of students by the 17-18 school year, and the majority of those would be students who'd be receiving speech-only services, with the smaller amount being students who needed a higher level of service.
But we expect more then?
Yes.
We expect more, and why do we expect more?
Okay, there are the, the programs for students with moderate severe disabilities, the SCD classes that the county currently serves at Hilltop, those students in the third year, which is the 17-18 school year, we will, we are also anticipating taking those programs back. So that's, that is the, the addition there, the increase.
So it'll be our 90, the current 97 approximately, plus an additional group?
Right.
In the, in the 17-18?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And the, the other thing I think to point out is, is we, the county will continue to serve currently identified students until they age out, and we are only taking students turning three and any new referrals, starting January 1st, or July 1st of 2016.
But then, when we get to 2017-18, we're taking all-
Right, any new students, right. So we'll have the students who are currently in the program in 16-17, and the additional new students coming in at, in 17-18.
Thank you, I'll make the same comments that I had made before, is that, as Ms. Parker says, this needs to be monitored, and we need to communicate with the parents, with the community, as to what we're doing, how we're doing it, trying to make sure that we have a very high-quality program, because we're going to be judged by the results, and apparently the three of us voting yes, I think, will be judged. And so I'm just hoping that, that it works out the way we all envisioned it to work out. So thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, no, no. Motion carried, three to two, with Dr. Paz and Ms. Limon voting no. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And good luck. And as I said, I'll give Dr. Cash a letter I received today, and I hope that every item in there is looked at carefully. And I know this doesn't need to be said, but for seven years, and I, I've heard it, not just, not just with this item, but time and time again, on a multitude of items, is the feeling, rightfully or wrongfully, that retaliation does take place in this school district. I'm hoping that it doesn't, I'm hoping that it's not true, but I hope that we take cognizance of the fact that there are people who think sometimes they retaliate against- are people who think, sometimes they retaliate against, because they speak out in many, many different forms, many, many different ways. So I hope that that also is taken into consideration.
I need to comment on that, I'm really sorry. I want to make it clear that in no circumstance will any staff member be allowed to or tolerated to retaliate against anyone for publicly voicing a concern. I want to make that clear.
I understand that.
I can't help how people may feel about what happened.
Yeah.
But I want to make it clear that if that, if there's any evidence of that, that behavior cannot, nor will it be tolerated.
And I want to make it equally clear that over eight years, I've heard it. You know, and it's not isolated, it's just in general, there's a feeling, rightfully or wrongfully, it's a perception.
It'd be good to know at some point what has been retaliated against.
Yeah, it's just a perception. Okay, let's go on to approval, H seven, approval of non-public agency contract with protocol healthcare.
So we are having a psychologist who is going on maternity leave, and we need to hire a temporary psychologist to provide services to students.
I would like to move to approve approval of non-public agency contract with protocol healthcare.
Second?
Discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. H eight, approval of single plans for elementary, secondary, non-charter schools.
Well, as board members had the pleasure to earlier today, listen to principals respond to questions and present their single plans for student achievement. This matters before you for their approval, as required by ed code.
Discussion? Questions? Comments?
Yes.
Yes.
I just wanted to say thank you to all the principals that spent so much time with us, and obviously, they've been working really hard on the single plans, but we can read through them, but it's frustrating, as usual, that we have such an incredibly brief amount of time to talk about them. And I really see this as a springboard for having the site visits and having more in-depth discussions about things, because there's just not enough time. Couple of things that I noticed overall, one was that in elementary in particular, Dr. Ramirez, just the fact that the district does not have, at this point, certainly not K six, and really not even four through six anymore, since very, only one school is really using Read 180 at this point. Reading interventions are all over the map. And so we need, as a board and a district, to be talking about reading intervention curricula and writing. I know that that's something that's in the works, but that is also currently all over the map, except for in the lower grades where they're using the Lucy Cockens. But again, I was thinking about how we should be talking about supplemental educational materials, including a writing curriculum. And then, you know, gosh, it really just depended on who we were talking to, and different things came up. And that's another frustration with it, is that I can't hear what you guys are saying, and I bet you guys are asking great questions, and I really miss not hearing what you're bringing up, so. But in general, I do feel like the template is largely based now on what the state is saying about the L cap and all that, and I appreciate the tie-ins, that was helpful.
Dr. Paz?
I agree. I would love to have heard you all ask your questions. I was trying to hear when there was a pause, it was a little challenging. And I also want to thank all the principals for their work. It really shows that, you know, they're prepared, they're ready to answer the questions. The one thing I have seen over the three years that I've done this is how much I feel that, one, it would be of great benefit that the elementary principals talk to the secondary principals or have an opportunity for them to talk. I don't think that happens enough. I think there's a lot of assumptions that are happening, both by the secondary and , you know, principals with the elementary school. I think it would be great if you guys could try to find a way to make that happen, because there was a lot of sharing going on, back and forth, you know, trying to align each other. I know it happens informally, and with parts of our district, it probably happens more than others, but that would be a great, great thing for it to happen, so if you guys could figure out a way to do that, share, find a way, you know, do an administrative PLC so that they could talk to each other and find ways to kind of align what they're doing, that would be great. And I echo the comments that Ms. Parker also said about the curriculums that we're using, the interventions that we're using. I was starting to count, and I lost count of how many different ones we were talking about in the, in the single plans, and there were a number. And I think that's, I get that teachers and our principals in particular want to implement what they feel is best, but I can't understand why we have so many. And I guess that would be for me to know more about and become aware a little more. I know that probably each one has its own specific goal in mind, but why so many in a different site? So that would be of interest, I think, shared across the board.
Ms. Limone?
So that was a great experience. I, always short on time, maybe it's because I talk a lot, too, I don't know, but it was a really good, you know, the data is what it is, and sometimes I'm not happy with what the data says, but that's the point, to look at the data and be honest about it and try to think about how to move forward. And Ms. Chitay and I actually also had very similar conversations about reading intervention, reading programs versus reading skills through professional development for teachers. And it was such a rich conversation. I was actually fascinated by the fact that there are different schools of thought amongst our principals about which of these, which combination, how to prioritize, whatever it takes to help students become better readers. And I, I hope that that conversation continues, but I was just really fascinated by the conversations we were having that were, one, too short, and we also, of course, having Ms. Chitay there, had to ask an imaginary budget question. If you had one line item in the L cap, and only one, how would you spend that, or what would that be? And again, it wasn't universal, it was not in alignment. So I think that having this opportunity to also be in a space where you hear disagreement in a small setting is not a bad thing, because it wasn't, it was, I think it provided to the kinds of conversations that are happening now and that continue to happen, so I thought it was great. I liked the format, it changed, or at least the look of it changed, that was very user-friendly, long, 80 pages per school, but it was easy to read. I appreciate the principals who really spent time on, like after each section, there was a, what was it, concluding comments or something like that, and I really learned a lot from those. So I just want to thank everyone for putting in a lot of time to putting an 80-page document together per school.
Ms. Adelson?
I enjoy these single plan meetings. I think it's really a very engaging process. I think the plans themselves are very labor-intensive for the principals, but also very long to go through, as, because we're going through 19 of them on these. So, yeah, I think it was a good process, and I enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you all for reading them. Ms. Parker?
Just following up, because there were some typos, and so I'm assuming that whatever gets submitted will be the corrected copies that are, that get submitted to the state and then also posted to the sites, since these will stay on our website pretty much forever. Yes?
Do we have a suggestion of what those typos are?
We had talked about some of them, they're minor changes, and Dr. Droudi had emailed us about one of them, so.
Okay, thank you. I would agree with everybody. It's an awful lot to go through in an hour and a half, and I, you know, maybe a suggestion would be to have two sessions, where we'd have maybe 30 minutes with each group instead of 20 minutes, just to give some more, but it would take more of our time, but wouldn't take any more of their time. And so it'd be us that would be spending a little bit more time if you did half at a time. It's an awful lot of data. It's just a tremendous amount of data that has been put together. My one question that I've asked every year is, how do we know a year from now that anything was done? I'm hoping there are some rubrics or something that comes out of all this that we can sit there and say, okay, here's what they said they were going to do. There's so much to do. I mean, it was, one, put it very bluntly, there's, you look at it and it's mind-boggling, there's just so much that we say we're going to do. Our focus, and with myself and Fran, was, and my focus, was parent engagement. What are the, what are the school sites doing to engage their parents? And again, it was across the board, a lot of different answers. And the other was reading. Why don't our children read, why don't a segment of our children read by third grade? And are we looking at it from the standpoint of are any of these children dyslexic?
Perfect.
And got some good answers, some very good answers from some of the elementary principals that were right on the topic. So I'm hoping that we see a huge improvement in reading, as the same thing you were talking about, but I'm looking at the results. By the time we get to third grade, I have, I don't understand why our children can't read, if in fact they can't, but I guess the indication is they can't. So we need to work on that. So do I have a motion to, have we had a motion? No.
I'd like to make the motion to approve single plans for elementary and secondary and non-charter schools.
Single plans.
I'll second it.
Under discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. And thank you to the principals for everything they did to put that together and get those to us in a timely manner and give us time to look at them. It was very much appreciated.
Yeah.
Conference agenda and report by Citizens Parcel Tax Oversight Committee on Measure A 2012.
Dr. Ben Droudi will present this.
Good evening, W B Board members, President Herron. We are certainly grateful to have our citizens volunteer as a part of Parcel Tax Oversight Committee, and furthermore, we're very glad that when they volunteer for chair positions. So here, I'm inviting Mrs. Maya Upton, the Chair of the Parcel Tax Oversight Committee for Measure A, to present the presentation.
Thanks. I am a parent and PTSA, longtime PTSA member at Santa Barbara High School, parent of three girls, so my last hurrah as my last daughter graduates was to try to help out as much as I can. So I have been on this Parcel Tax Committee for a few years, and this is our report for last year. So much of this is obvious and well-known to all of you. I don't think we need to spend a lot of time talking about why and when, but the obvious purpose of the Parcel Tax is to supplement the junior high and high schools in math, science, arts, foreign language, and that was our job as the committee, go ahead, yeah, the committee, to check in with high schools and see what was being done. These are our members. Go ahead.
Yeah.
And the revenue expenditures for the 2014, '15 calendar years, I mean, school year, starting with $40,000, taking in more than $2 million, and spending 1.9, and ending Obviously.
Can you go back to that, please, one slide? The $140,000?
Yeah.
The $140,000, 521, that's been allocated out to sites, hasn't it? And they just didn't?
That's my understanding, it just hasn't been collected.
So individual sites will be still spending their share of that. It's not open money that we can designate someplace that's been allocated. Thank you.
Foreign language, arts in the junior highs, and music and theater, and I think technology as well. Reducing the ninth grade math size was one of the goals, and many teachers were hired for that purpose. Some of the supplies and equipment we saw being brought into schools, display screens and computer carts, instructional supplies, and art, yeah. Here we are again. The senior exemptions being $26,000 in interest, I think our total revenue, over $2 million. Teacher salaries and benefits were obviously a majority of that spending. A lot of art and technology teachers supplemented computer equipment. We saw a lot of that go, especially during the installation of the technology packages, I think, in many of the high school classrooms and junior highs. We did some site visits, and those reports are available, not as many as we wanted to maybe as a volunteer committee. Just getting a quorum and having a meeting is sometimes a big challenge. Getting people to take a trip to a high school or a junior high on their time is also hard. Made some nice goals of improving some of those things this next year.
Yeah.
Any questions for me?
Any questions or comments? Ms. Parker?
I just want to say thank you so much to you and to the rest of the committee. We know that this is volunteer work, as you pointed out, and for you to step forward and to essentially protect the investment of the taxpayer. It's really important to us, it's important to any future bonds, parcel taxes, anything that we do. So thank you so much for your work. I feel that I particularly have to stay on your good side, since your daughter is my son's RA up at Lewis and Clark College.
Oh, really?
Claire is my son's RA, and so he-
I don't want to tell you any stories.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, yeah, she loves her job.
Okay, good.
And her kids.
I'm sure that she has a lot of work to do up there.
Yes.
But thank you, and I particularly appreciate, as you're thinking about, as your youngest is leaving, that for those of you who have been such strong volunteers for Santa Barbara Schools, that as your kids age out, that you'll stay in and help the next generation of kids, too. So thank you.
Trying, trying. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll go now to item I two, discussion of board policy and admin reg 5116.1, intra-district open enrollment, and board policy 5117, intra-district attendance.
So this matters before you for general discussion and input moving forward.
Yeah, I'll take it. Thank you. President Herron, Board of Education, glad to be here tonight to not present anything new to you, however, to review the board policies and AR-related to transfers, both intra-district and intra-district. I thought it was especially important, you had asked several months ago that we revisit the intra-district policy, but I thought it important to also look at the intra-district policy because of the changes that were made to the board policy back in May, and let you know what the plans are to put that into place this year, moving forward during the transfer, what we call the transfer season. So it's coming up. So we'll be covering, as I said, the intra-district. I want to look at the difference between options versus requested transfers, option to transfer versus requested transfers, and then we'll look at the inter-district transfer process. So basically, I broke it down so that the option to transfer and, let me back up, before I go on, I want to point out an error, I like to be transparent. We do actually have three schools on the open enrollment list. It doesn't really change what we do, but when I went back and looked at the 2015, '16 open enrollment list, we do have three schools, McKinley, Harding, and I don't want to misspeak, but we do have three of our elementary schools on there, but it doesn't really change what we do. So we, option to transfer comes up first in the board policy, and first right goes always to option to transfer. So program improvement, which we'll look at in a moment, students who are victims of violent crimes on campus have an option to transfer, and then special circumstances, and then referrals that come out of SARB. And I wanted you to know that we actually do have students who are transferred- And I wanted you to know that, that we actually do have students who are transferred. Usually, these occur during the middle of the year because of these other reasons, numbers two, three, and four. And, and those are handled within my office, and there are procedures that we, we go through to grant those. Then, we'll also be looking at the request to transfer and how that works. So, the first is the program improvement transfer, and we know that this has, has gotten a bit of, a bit more focus as of late. So, in, what we're looking at this year is that in the case of students enrolled in a PI school and making that assignment, the superintendent will give the highest priority to the lowest achieving students from low-income families. Our intention this year, when, when placing students, is that we will be placing students who fall into that category first within our non-Titel I schools, or non-PI schools, rather. So, that would be Washington, Roosevelt, and Open Alternative. So, their applications will be considered first. And then, the board policy says that the superintendent will give specific school-site priority to students of employees, students of employees at that site, siblings of students already at that school, and students of district employees not assigned to that school in that order. So, the school assignments made by the superintendent or designation shall take place before considering any other requests to transfer per the next section.
Does, does that second paragraph apply to the first paragraph? In other words, when the superintendent gives highest priority, and you have a list of students, does he first?
PI goes first.
Okay. But then, within that group, does he, okay, these are PI schools, and there are, among these, there are siblings that are different schools. Do the siblings get pulled out, or the employees get pulled out, or is that pure and simple?
No, those are, well, students who fall within these, these categories could apply under PI, and if they qualified, they'd be placed as low-achieving, low-income families.
So, the fact that they're a sibling or employee doesn't, doesn't play a role in that decision?
No.
They're just in that group, but they don't have any, they don't have any priority?
They're in that group. They don't have priority.
And Mr. Herron?
And then, the priority comes into play after that.
Thank you.
Mr. Herron? Ms. Parker? I just, I'm, I'm wondering, because when we discussed this in May, I'm just wondering, when, and we'll get to this, I'm wondering if we need to clarify a little bit, because this is all under the program improvement transfer piece. So, I'm not positive, because our intention is, first, the lowest achieving students, which may or may not have siblings at the school, but then, still, under the PI banner is the second paragraph. So, they're still applying under program improvement transfer, and then, it's going to be siblings of, that are applying for a program improvement transfer, and then, and that's where, you know, I felt like when we did discuss this in May, that this wasn't an issue, because you were, I remember you being very worried about the siblings at that point, because every school, you know, when, when Ms., I almost want to call you doctor, but not yet, almost, when Ms. Wagonek-
Don't jinx me.
I'm not going to jinx you. Was, is talking about the transfers, it would, it would still give priority to siblings, because they would be applying from a PI school, because all of our schools, except for non-Titel I, schools are PI. So, that's why I wasn't as worried about it in May, but we won't really know until we see this play out for the first time in this transfer season.
Well, I guess, my question is, if, if we've got 100 PI school requests to transfer, and we have 50 spots, will the kids who are siblings, employees, children, and district employees, will they have a preference in those 50 slots?
That is not, that is not how the board policy reads. So, so, the board policy reads, the superintendent will next give specific school. It's not to say that, that the answer is no, but it's not laid out within our current language that way.
So, in other words, siblings and employee children will not move to the top of the line?
Right.
Okay.
Can I just ask a clarification question? So, in that first part, if there are students at a PI school who are not actually low-achieving or coming from low-income families, do they qualify under that, just by the mere fact that they're at a PI school?
No.
Okay.
I think we need to really get into this a little bit more deeply, because we will need to address the wording, I think, for the next one, to make clear. Because when we talked about it in May, this was first, in a student transferring out of a PI school to a non-PI school, first is lowest achieving, lowest students. Next is siblings. Next is, so, it's from a PI school to a non-PI school, next was siblings. That's why this paragraph fell under program improvement transfer, instead of not under program improvement transfer.
And, and can I go back to Ms. Lee Mon's, I wanted to comment on that. I said no, but that's only because we would never have that many spaces. I mean, I don't believe we would ever have that many spaces. I think we would always have low-achieving students from low-income families, because we just honestly don't have that much space. We have, I don't want to project numbers right now, but probably below 40 in, in our, in our schools. So, but we'll have that information as, I'll go on, and you'll see when we'll have that information.
Mr. Herron, if I may?
Yes, Ms. Parker.
Before you leave this slide, sorry. For our incoming kindergarteners, we don't know that they're low-achieving students.
True.
Does the low-income family piece come into play, then, for the incoming kindergarten?
That's an interesting question.
Thank you. Is there an interesting answer, or do we not know?
It says, low-achieving students from low-income families. So, unless we had a way to measure kindergarten students before they, during the application, that's, that's the issue, is we, we don't necessarily have any data on them during that transfer period.
So, for kindergarten, are you saying that we could essentially have our, a different transfer priority list?
We could.
As long as they're just from PI to, okay.
But they still have to be from a low-income family, because whether or not they're low or high-achieving kindergarteners, and whether or not we know it, it doesn't matter. They still have to be from a low-income family, and that we do have at kindergarten level.
And that we would. So, staying with this program improvement transfer process, so, we have OAS, Roosevelt, Washington, and then, Lachalina Junior High School are the options. PI transfer option, of course, is given highest priority. Lowest performing students from low-income families, as we already talked about. In K three, I wanted to say what we, what we think our measurements will be, assessments that we'll use, and I worked with Dr. Ramirez on this, it'll be the SRI, the STAR Math and Reading, and the KSET. Four through 12, we'll look at students who nearly met or did not meet. So, starting with the, the did not meet, and moving up to the nearly met. Each school capacity is going to be calculated in a non-arbitrary manner. Ms. Yete and I set a date to meet in December to discuss what that will look like, and, per our, our administrative regulations, we'll have those openings available at the beginning of January. And then, the transfer window for this year is January 4th through February 15th. Any questions on that?
I think I do. This year, the schools are all frozen in program improvement status, since the Fed-
Yes.
The federal government is frozen, essentially. And we have not been notifying PI with the transfer process, even though it makes complete sense to do that, since we already know what schools are PI. There's no reason to wait on it. Am I correct that this year, you will be including PI information with the transfer option information at the same time?
Right, so, it will, it will, we are redoing the transfer application to include the PI part on the transfer application.
Okay, great.
Wanted to wait until after this presentation and hear what you all had to say before moving forward with making those changes. And then, we can talk about requests for transfer, once we have met the, met the priorities in terms of the options for transfer. So, again, we will calculate in a non-arbitrary manner, and we have the application window. And again, looking at, the school site priority is to students of employees, siblings, and students of district employees not assigned to that school in that order. And then, if there is still space available, those spaces would be made available to students through the, through the lottery process, if there were any spaces still remaining. And those are our requests for transfer. So, moving on to the intra-district transfers.
Well, let's, let's stay in intra-district, just to make sure we have no more questions. Ms. Parker?
I will just point out that this may be an aberrant year, in the sense that Lachalina had an overabundance of requests for transfers, and we need to be careful that we are doing that for program improvement reasons, that people are getting placed in the same way that, you know, that we're talking about with the new transfer code, or the new transfer policy that came in in May. But I just wanted to say that we should be aware that really, Lachalina is at capacity. And with junior high, there's OAS with a junior high program that can take students, but we may need to be thinking about other ways to open up capacity for students that want a non-program improvement school at the junior high level. Yes.
How close is Lachalina to capacity?
They are currently at 948 students. They have two teachers who are traveling in classrooms, and so, we would say that they are at or above capacity right now.
And I'll point out, Mr. Herron, that when we changed the policy, one of the things that we did was, we talked about, when you look at it, that, that we don't open classes based on transfer requests. And so, essentially, we're doing that left and right in the secondary district. And so, that's something, it's about not having too much of an impact on the home school and the attendance boundary students, and so, it's definitely a concern.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on to intra-district transfers.
Just on that last slide.
Okay. You can't.
You know, the part in quote.
Yes.
That's after-
Yes, that's the part after the PI, when they talk about PI. And then, so, I'm reemphasizing the piece about the order-
So, above that is the PI piece.
Prior to the requests, then we, we fill in here.
Okay, thank you.
Inter-district transfers. First priority is given to children of district employees. Then, our, our next priority are what I call the 100, up to 50 of those being elementary students, and up to 25 of those elementary students being OAS. Currently, there are 22 intra-district transfer students at OAS, so they nearly reached their capacity this year. Any remaining spaces are for secondary students. So, who are the 100?
Oh, okay, good, okay.
Okay. Who are the 100? They, the 100 can be composed, or comprised of siblings of current students enrolled in the district, first priority, children of full-time Santa Barbara City College employees, and then, all other students.
And is that just a typo at the top? Thank you.
Thank you. Here's the application process. Again, same, same window of time as the intra. We do, we have a piece in the policy that transfer applications of newly hired employees are accepted within 30 days following the date of hire. Transfers are for one year only. Unlike the intra-district transfers, they must reapply every year. And folks have the right to appeal within 15 days of receiving their written denial. And our goal is to send out the written denials the first week of March. I did not put that in the intra-district transfer piece, but we have the same goal. And that's it.
Can you go back one slide?
Yes, sir.
One more, I'm sorry. Yeah. Hold that up there for a bit. Questions? Ms. Parker?
Well, the big question is, what are we going to do for next year? Because we need to be thinking about, is it still at or about 100? Do we, do we want to go ahead and allow that to increase to a certain extent, even though some kids may be graduating out or moving out?
22.
22 are leaving?
22 seniors are currently.
So, I, I think it might make some sense to, to up that number, so that students can apply, so it's not restricted to just 22 applications for next year.
From, from OAS?
From anywhere.
Okay. Yeah, I think we're on the same wavelength. My concern is, when we did this, it didn't dawn on me that we probably filled it up the first year. And after that, it's a moot question, because we're almost at capacity. And you mentioned that there's 22 OAS students?
Yeah, it's the same number as seniors in OAS.
Yeah, so, and again, I'm, I'm not sure all 22 are K through eight, or in eighth or seventh are going to be leaving. But at 22, there's probably not a lot of room at OAS for intra-district transfers. And so, is 25 an appropriate number? Because the goal of the 25 was to try to get them, get their attendance increased, to make it a more viable school. And just by adding two or three more students from intra-district, might not be enough to put them over that hump. Ms. Eilson?
I have a question that relates to this, and that is, when, you know, as far as what does the district do for addresses that come in that could be falsified for students? That could be showing them as living within our district, but they're not?
Oh, so, your question is, if, if we get a report, what do we do?
Right, if you get a report, or if you, what, what is the protocol, as far as-
So, the protocol is, we investigate it to the extent that we can. And the first, and I receive these, I probably get, I mean, I'm still relatively new, but I would say I get a couple a month since July of folks reporting in or reporting on other individuals, and we look into them to the extent that we can. The first thing I always do is contact the registrar of the school, or, in the case of elementary, it's the office manager usually, and ask to see the verification of address, because they are supposed to do the annual verification of address. If that's there and it's recent, then it's acceptable. If there hasn't been one, then we look into it. And I actually have, there have been three families that we've told they have to. Now, it's, it's not really an issue with the intra-district transfers, but the intras is really, I think, what you're asking about.
Well, I'm asking about both.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I assume you'd go through the same investigation-
Right.
-for either one.
Right.
And I'm just curious, because I know through all this, there's parents that are frustrated that there's students that may be reporting false addresses and getting in, and while others who are going through it, through the procedure, may not be.
Right, so, we investigate that. And I actually did a visit to a home a couple weeks ago of a Roosevelt family who, we had a report that they were no longer living, where it was, they had reported their address, and it was true, they had moved to Oxnard. And so, they've been asked to enroll in Oxnard, so.
Mr. Herron?
Ms. Parker?
Just, just following up on that, because I, it is absolutely a perception at the, and I, and I feel like with the change to allowing some students in to intra-district, that we kind of relieved that at the, at the intra-district level. But certainly, there's a perception at the elementary level that there are people lying about their, about their addresses.
Right.
And, you know, honestly, didn't, even when, when it was about intra-districts, and we were worried about basic aid status, we were focusing on that, but it is not right or fair for, for families to lie about, you know, to use grandma's address, or to have a friend, you know, allow them to use that address. And I do think it's important that we follow up on those questionable ones, or- And I do think it's important that we follow up on those questionable ones or ones that get reported to us, because it's just absolutely wrong. And I think it is a responsibility of us, even though it becomes a cost to us in terms of time spent on it and the investigative process. I think to be fair to all families, that we need to be very careful about verifying addresses.
And I would agree. And I feel like we do that when we have the information. It is very interesting that I get reports, but folks don't want to share the information that they have. They say, well, we hear that, and they won't give names or add... So, it makes it very difficult to investigate when they say there's a problem, but they won't give us any facts to look into, so.
And I just want to say, I appreciate what you just mentioned about the fact that at every step of the investigation, the evidence that's collected is evaluated, which determines whether or not we move forward with the additional next step of that, you know, assessment or evaluation process. I think that that's also important to note. I mean, at some point, there are issues where we just have to say, well, if all the evidence leads us to whatever direction, then that's what we have in front of us and that's what we have to work with. So, I appreciate that it is a multi-tiered kind of process. It's not just one action that you take or that your office takes, but that it's multiple actions. And there's different evidence that informs your decision.
Exactly, thank you. Any questions?
Are the principals and staff at the schools on the outlook for discrepancies?
They are. And one thing I wanted to say that we've done recently was, we did a district-wide mailer of the CASP results. And we got back the non-deliverables. So, I actually, our office is taking those and we're going to be going through them first before they go to the school sites, to give direction to the school sites to check the addresses and find out why they were non-deliverables. So, that's one example of the thing, types of things that we do in order to make sure that folks are living where they say they're living.
That's good.
Presumably, if they've given a false address, the letter would go to that address and the person receiving it would say, here's your mail.
Right, yeah, it doesn't necessarily solve the false address, but it solves the, they gave an address verification, but then, three weeks later, they moved.
Okay.
You know, and they're no longer living there and they didn't have a forwarding.
Right.
You know, it's not foolproof. There are foolproof things, but it's probably another board meeting.
Right.
One step, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Parker?
No, but I just think that we need to come back with some little tweaks to this policy in terms of the, changing the inter-district numbers that I'd like to see a staff recommendation on for the 5117 policy. And then, maybe a little piece of language that goes into 501.6.1 on, you know, the program improvement transfer. So, I would like to see that, I mean, it needs to come back to us probably at the next meeting so that we can clean that up for the season.
Dr. Cash, any suggestions on the 100 students?
Well, I had suggested originally that the word annually be placed in there with the understanding that it will always be based on capacity. So, I mean, at some...
Annually, and what part?
Up to 100 students annually, up to 50 elementary students annually, up to 25 OAS students annually.
So, that's an additional 100, you're saying?
Yeah, and that's just all based on capacity.
I think if we did that, we might need to take out the line about OAS. But, yeah.
I mean, there is no way that we're going to be, four years from now, we'll have admitted 400 more high school students. We don't have the capacity for that. We would simply say we're at capacity.
Do we have defined capacities at each school?
Yeah.
I mean, is that based on fire code or...
No, based on kind of what the analysis that Ms. Wagonick gave, which is, we're not using non-instructional classrooms. We don't have teachers who are traveling from space to space to space.
So, currently, La Colina then is beyond capacity if we have traveling teachers?
No, traveling teachers that are themselves does not mean that we're above capacity, because there could be a whole host of reasons why a teacher is part-time in a classroom. They may be a part-time teacher.
Do I understand that even though it's up to 100, then in reality, we stretched that number this year?
We did.
Well, and we have the 100, we actually are at about 112 or 113, but those 12 or 13 are the ones who fall under...
The options.
The children of district employees, which aren't part of the 100. So, we're right at about the 100 spot. But if we, because they have to reapply, if we say 100 annually, we might want to take out either the reapply to be considered, as long as they're still in good standing, or set the number. So, we can come back with a recommendation at the next board meeting.
And, Ms. Parker, so that I'm clear on the request on the intra-language, you want more clarity around that second part of that.
Right, in the... I'm sorry, I'm looking at, it might be the AR. No, it's under option to transfer.
Go back to page two or thereabouts. No, you passed it. One more, there.
Now, that's, I'm trying to find it, though. I think it's in, it might be in the AR, hold on a second.
While you're looking for that, in the 100 inter-district transfer students that we accept, and they have to apply again next year, do they get any priority because they have been a student?
Not currently based on our policy, no.
If there's 150 apply, somehow, 100 are called out and the fact that they've been here a year doesn't count?
Right, not based on our current wording of our policy.
How would you pick the 100 that, out of the 150 new ones, 150 for the next year? If you're 150 apply?
I'd have to review the process.
Okay. I would, personally, I would think that if you're here for a year...
You should have some priority.
They have some priority.
Yeah.
As long as they're in good standing.
Yeah. I don't see the need for them to reapply every year, frankly.
I think you wanted to, no, you left that out of intra-district, yeah.
Yeah. So, this is on page two of the BP, the last paragraph in that section where it says, it is, it's not broken out separately in the BP, it is all part of one paragraph. But I just think that before it says, "The superintendent will next give specific school site priority," that maybe it says something like, "In this category comma, the superintendent will then, or will, you know, or continuing in this category, the superintendent will next give..."
Priority.
Just to be super clear that we haven't popped out of program improvement transfers.
Got it.
Okay, so within program improvement, hit those categories, yeah. Thank you.
We'll bring this back with those changes in December.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wagonick.
Presentation of student indicated report.
Well, here we are, we have an opportunity. Dr. Guillermo Wan is away. She won't be part of the presentation, though. She did produce it. Dr. Zdradion Ramirez.
Thank you. There's a lot of data here to go through, so we thought that, I'll go through half of it and Dr. Ramirez will resume from there. But we thought, after each slide, we would make a few comments and then leave it up for questions, if that's okay with you. The data that we'll be looking at are data that we have, we have basically pointed to, we have extrapolated from the LCAP, as what we said would be important to assess our progress. So, in this report here, we're looking at student achievement data. But along the way, as we developed this data, we thought that it was important to include some of the access data to provide more context for you, because we think sometimes in isolation of just the achievement data, if you don't have the access data, it gives a different impression. What you're looking at in this slide is the enrollment data for the past three years along with GPA of students who have a 3.1 or above. You can see there's a slight decline overall in the number of students enrolled in honors classes. But there is a slight increase in the number of students who have earned a 3.0, a GPA of 3.0 or above. So, with that, I'll stop here and just answer any questions you may have.
Ms. Parker?
I would just say generally, I love this. And I guess it was Dr. Guillermo Wan who put this together. It's a very readable report. My only wish is that we actually had done more than three years. I know it probably wouldn't have looked so pretty then.
Yes.
But I feel like a lot of the things, you know, we put in place in kind of, you know, 2011. And so, it would have been interesting to see some changes over sort of the 2010 to the 2015 period, because I just feel like three years isn't necessarily enough. But, thank you.
So, you think about five-year data?
Yeah, I think five-year data is.
Are there any reasons for the slight decline that you know of?
It's hard to ascertain as to a reason. I would need to have more analysis on this slight decline. The possibilities could be that a lot of, at the high school level, we did away with some of the honors courses that had equivalent AP courses. So, if, a lot of those students probably went into AP courses and then thereby. So, that's, after having more of a direct analysis on that, too. But that's my hunch for now.
I have a question. Is the 3.0 weighted or unweighted?
The 3.0 is... Unweighted.
Thank you.
The next slide we have is enrollment in the AP or an IB courses, at least one or more AP or IB courses. As you can see, there's a slight increase overall, which goes to the argument I just said previously, that in the school year 15, 16, when we present the data, you will see a much larger increase because of our work with equal opportunity schools. But that information is not represented in these results here. Any questions regarding that? So, if you go to the next slide, here we're looking at the number of AP exams taken versus the pass rate of the AP exam. And as you can see, there's a slight decrease in both areas in overall students, in the pass rate, as well as the number of AP assessments taken.
Do you have any thoughts on why that is? I mean, it looks like there's a decline for all groups.
Yes, I know around this time, a lot of the AP curriculum was now shifting into more of a common core focus. Like I said, that's anecdotal data, but I don't have exact information to say that that's in fact what happened. But that's the hunch I have. And in conversations with other teachers, AP teachers, this is, they also say the same thing. It's harder now.
Does the cost of the AP exam enter into the downward trend?
No, we haven't, we know it impacts the gap in, the gap in the number of students who are socio-economically disadvantaged and who are not. We know that impacts that. But in terms of the decline, that information has not come forward. Or we don't have any information to suggest that it's the cost of AP exams.
Do we have any programs to help with that cost?
Yes, the different high schools have different programs. There's a lot of fundraisers. What we do, as a district, we do pay for the preparatory exams, like the PSAT and the new ACT, what they call ASPIRE, the preparatory exam. So, we pay for those, so everyone takes those, but we do not pay for the AP exams.
Is that an interesting observation, because 2014, 15, the state severely reduced its grant program for economically disadvantaged students, partial funding of AP exams. So, that could, there could be a relationship.
And, Mr. Herron, if I could chime in on that, as somebody who had a kid graduate through, we push our kids into these AP classes, and especially for seniors, if you're not socio-economically disadvantaged, once you know where your kid is going to college, so many of them don't take the AP credit, it makes no sense to pay. In my case, it would have cost me, you know, $500 for my kid to take all of those AP exams for no purpose. And so, a lot of seniors in particular, I think you'll find, just don't take the exams. It doesn't make any sense.
Yes. And that information is more and more prevalent now. So, that could be, that could be another reason. As I mentioned, it'll be fascinating looking at the results next year, because we have a lot more students enrolling in the AP courses. We can't wait to see that, that data. In terms of IB, you'll see there's also a decline in the last three years in the numbers of IB exams taken. But you'll also see that there is a slight increase in the number of students that pass the IB exam. As you know, the only IB high school we have is at Dos Pueblos. This data you're looking at here is the percent of graduates completing UC, CSU A- through G courses. And I'll read just the definition of what A- through G is, just for the public out there. A- through G courses are 15-year-long courses that students must take and pass with a C grade or better to become minimally eligible to apply to the University of California and California State University. I want to spend just a little bit of time on this piece here, because it is a conversation we've had in terms of LCAP. We will continue to present this data in the LCAP. I just want you all to understand that this is cohort data, and we may not see increases in this for the next two or three years, because this is totally associated to the structures in the master schedule. And so, if you wonder what are the things we're doing to impact this in future years, is, for example, the co-teaching. Us having co-teaching courses for special ed automatically puts students in this category to be able to have A- through G access. Also, the reclassification work that we've done automatically puts more students that are more aligned to take A- through G results. So, we are doing a lot of things that will help increase this. I just want to warn that you may not see the results for the next two or three, for the two or three years.
But just, can I ask a clarifying question? I mean, is that saying that 0% English learners are completing A- through G? None?
Yes.
Mr. Herron, excuse me. Just following up on that, because a lot of these categories overlap, I think it would be particularly helpful for us to see the Hispanic category broken out to English learner and not English learner.
Yes.
I think, obviously, we will see a bump up, but I think we will still see the gap. And I want to be sure that we are paying attention to that and not just thinking, oh, well, you know, it's the English learner piece is pulling it completely down. And so, I want to be sure that we're paying closer attention to that.
Absolutely.
And then, one more clarifying question. That's completing all the A- through G courses, right?
All A- through G, 12th grade, this is senior graduates, yes. So, Calvo is coming. I mean, it's not, it's not going to be like this. We've, part of the reason why I want to bring this to you is, as we implement co-teaching, as we reclassify, as we bring differentiated instruction in our system, this is the data we're trying to impact. And you might sometimes hear rumblings, because staff may say that we're doing this, we're doing that, but I guess we just need the public to understand that our goal is to increase the number of students that are in A- through G and enclose that gap between all the different subgroups. So, some work has to be done for that to happen. And we're... So some work has to be done for that to happen. And we're, we're in the right path. But, but I want, I wanted everybody to understand that you might hear some noise as we make those decisions.
I also wanted to make, and good evening, Board. Thank you for the opportunity to, to comment on this. But I wanted to, to come back to Ms. Limon's point or question about English learners. One of the things that this particular data, the way it's broken down this way, may not capture is reclassified students. So at the moment in which a student reclassifies, they, they no longer go into the English learner group, the subgroup. So because we don't have RFEP students or IFEP students reflected in this data, it, it also is just a bit misleading to suggest that they're only, they would be probably, perhaps, in the English learner category or in the Hispanic category. But once, they would, they would merit a category unto itself, which would be reclassified students. But that's not always how we share out information pertaining to UC, CSU, A through G courses.
Yes.
Oh, one question. So this would be if they, you said 15 years' worth of A through G, was that right?
Yes.
So that would be close to four A through G courses per year?
Yes.
Okay, so if a student, say for instance, did not, say they got 14, they would not be on this list, right?
They would not be on our list.
So it's very obsolete. Okay.
And to get, just to, the, the four core areas are obviously four years of, of college prep, at least college prep English, three years of math, O F to Algebra II.
Right.
Two, four years of social science.
Right.
And then, and then there's a bunch of other ones that.
And it would be interesting to see what percentage exceed that. I mean, if you actually took how many students are maybe have 18 or 20 or, you know, whatever.
Absolutely. I know you've been very valiant about making sure, you, you've worked hard in making sure that our courses are aligned through A through G. That would actually help us impact this. So the more variety of courses that we have that are A through G, the better off we'll be.
Absolutely.
So we're making some great inroads in that area also. So thank you for that.
Okay.
Next data we have is SAT exam results. And we have students taking SAT exams. You see that there's a decline there as well. And then a steady, real small decline in the number of students. I'm sorry, in all students, there is a slight increase in the students that are scoring 15, 1500 or more in the SATs. As you can see, there's still a gap that exists there with the different subgroups. Here we have the ACT exam results. As you can see the trends there. And if, for those of you who know, the, the entire assessment, ACT and SAT are changing. It's going, is more, is going to be more aligned to the Common Core. So, so, so our master schedules, our courses, our teachers have to really start focusing, focusing on a lot of those practices within the Common Core to make sure that our students are, are able to access the curriculum and be successful in these assessments. So it'll be, so the first year of the new SAT will be next year. This year sophomore class will take the new SATs as juniors.
And it's important to note that the SAT is going back to a two-subtest program, which is what they used to have as opposed to the three-subtest program, which all this data is based on.
Yeah. So if there are any more questions about the, more of the secondary data, I'm going to pass this off to Dr. Ramirez.
Again, good evening, Board, and Board President Herron. The, the slide you see here is the percentage of Yale students that have demonstrated at least one year's growth in CELT scores. Traditionally, that's viewed as moving a, a performance level. And the, the data's been, been very consistently strong for us. This is, so the numbers in 12, 13 are 28, 16, 27, 94, and 13, 14, and 28, 21. If you, just to, to give you an idea of the, the actual numbers. So overall, that, that's a, it's a good sign of growth, that, at least on the English language proficiency assessment, which is CELT. And that indicates that students are making growth from year to year, at least as far as their English proficiency is concerned. What we have next now is, is what you've seen thus far has been largely lag data. Data that, that really is, is an aggregate over, over a series of years. Oftentimes, as you saw in the SAT or in the, the, the conversation around A through G, it's outcomes after high school. What you see here is something that is a little bit more formative in nature. These are the percentage of students that last year in grades two through six that performed at, in the proficient or advanced range. And these, these bands are very consistent. They're measured out in, in four different performance levels. And proficient or advanced is, is obviously what we would like to see our, our students trend. Last year, the elementaries committed to beginning to assess using the, the SRI. But really the focus here is on Lexile measures. So as a, as a universal screener, a universal tool. So what you see here is a, is a breakdown. One of the things that I'd like to point is here you do see data pertaining to reclassified students, disaggregated from English learner students. Now, you still see a significant discrepancy. But that's, that's also because our English learners also come to us at all, at all levels. So it's, it's just another way of, of understanding this data. What we do feel very optimistic about is that our reclassification data is coming back strong, indicating that we, we are, we are making significant inroads. And particularly now with our interim reclassification criteria, looking at reclassification in, in earlier years and providing a mechanism to do, to do that. There's optimism that this will, will carry forward. So going back to some of your questions about literacy, this, this begins to, to get at that. So I don't know if you have any questions pertaining?
And I just want to add that this is, we, we feel that this is powerful data. For, just by the virtue of this data with the, with all elementary schools, it has created some great conversations about literacy and if, whether we're, we have a coherent, coherent plan at K-12 with all of our students. And furthermore, the high schools for this year have joined in, in, in the need and a want to have Lexile data for their students as well. So currently, we're actually in the process of assessing students for, for the Lexile. So next year when we come back, this will be a K-12, or two, two through 12th grade data we'll be looking at.
Next, we have reclassification data. Now, this, this data's, data that really has come, has always been, of course, very important, but has taken on an added level of, of, of observation and, and focus over the last, over the past couple of years. So one of the things that, that you'll see here is the student counts. And this was mentioned previously in a, in a, in another report that Dr. Guillermo Juan mentioned, that the, the 14, 15 data, this is data that is consistent with what was reported to CDE or what CDE reported out, I should say, and that is in the number of 377. The, the more accurate number around that is in excess of 1,000 students reclassified last year. Unfortunately, our time, timetables don't quite align. And so that number you'll see reflected in 15, 16 data and information. So I just wanted to bring that out as being important because you, you, you see here a decline, when in fact, it's quite the opposite. So it's important for us to, to kind of keep that in, in context here as well. But in any event, one of the things that you would see if this 14, 15 data were appropriately classified in CDE the way we had it, is that there is a significant upward trend. It's not, it's not a decline by any means in 14, 15.
Just following up, would it be, would it be possible in the future to see our own data that's accurate? Maybe in addition to, so that we know why there's the difference between the two, but...
Yes. Moving forward, we have here CASP data and the following two slides indicate CASP ELA and CASP math. So this one is specifically for ELA. And, and again here, what, for us to, to just reiterate, this is, of course, as we've discussed many times over, it's our baseline. It's our baseline year. The results for the racial and ethnic groups are not available. And the CDE is looking into the source of the error for these subgroups. The results are reported by CDE in percentages, not raw numbers. But we're looking to get a revised file once the CDE has made its corrections. But what you see here is what, what information we have available. And that includes a, a number of different breakdowns. But in, in this case, more similar and consistent with the SRI data that you saw previously, at, at least in terms of the reporting elements. So again, here we have, we have a breakdown by, by, by language status and also special education and socioeconomic disadvantage.
The, the one thing that was, that was pretty striking for us is, you know, as we, as we increased reclassification, our reclassification process, as we improved our reclassification process and more students were classified, conversations around whether students were ready or, or, or able to navigate through the curriculum when they're in these A through G courses, general ed curriculum, that was a fear. That was a concern at some points. But this data was pretty revealing that, that when you actually do reclassify students, that, that, that they can be successful. And so I think having this data was important for us as a, as a system to look at and really understand and validate our decisions as we, as we move forward.
And just to add that, it was roughly about a year ago that we, we adopted our interim reclassification criteria. And the important thing to hear to note is that to, to, to echo what Dr. Droudi has stated, the, the reclassification process, again, it is about language proficiency. And what we see here is also a belief that the more access to standards, the more access to core curriculum, to rigor that our students receive with proper supports can lead to this kind of performance. So this isn't, it, it shouldn't take us by surprise because I think the, the research bears that out and just what you see here bears out that, that that is in fact the case.
I, I want to publicly acknowledge Dr. Ramirez for his real hard work last year in making the reclassification interim criteria come to the Board. That was a second order change unparalleled, probably, as far as a real change in beliefs and attitudes of our staff. And the results bear a lot of fruit. So, thank you.
And I have a question. So I mean, I'm guessing this is being shared with others in the district as well. Like we're seeing this and we're, we're looking at the reclassified students and going, wow. It's, it's a big deal. And I know that part of the work that the district has done, and I hope I'm not going off tangent, but just has been about, you know, just thinking about our students, who they are, where they're coming from. We've talked a lot about cultural proficiency. But I see this as kind of evidence of why that matters. And so my hope is that others across the district are also getting, having the chance to see this and having similar types of conversation like we're having here at the, at the board level.
Yes, you can count it.
And just, I'm sorry, I got to go back, you know, just, you know, we, we discussed earlier about just access to A through G and, and the challenges that people may have with that. That notion that certain students may not be successful there, like I said, this is, this is speaks to that. So, so this is data I know we're, at least, we're going to be sharing with the principals and, but so we're excited about this.
And what you see here is, is CASP data, again pertaining to, in this case, pertaining to math. And, and here you see that, that that trend line continues for, for many of, much of what we saw in ELA. And, and in this case, we are, we are talking about numbers in the reclassified arena very consistent with where other students are also trending. And, and so, you know, we know that we've got some work to do in, in areas, but, but we're very, very proud of, of the initiatives. And again, this is an aggregate, not just of last year. It's, it's an accumulation of years of, of students having become reclassified. And, and it just so happens that this is in those, in those grades that, that are reflected in those, in those assessment years, three through eight and 11.
Ms. Parker?
I just want to point out, to be very transparent, however, that with this, the graph has changed so that the percent passing is no longer 70% as it was in the previous graph, as the top bar, but at 40% here. So the, the bar graphs look similar and yes, there is that jump up for reclassified students, but it is abysmal in math. And, you know, I think one of the issues that's come up with the transition to the new type of testing is the, how much more language is needed. And, and that's something that we really need to, to focus on with students. But I think it's so important that we, that we focus on math as a, as a core academic subject, as important as English language arts, that we cannot fail our students in this because it closes so many doors to them if they don't understand. So just in general, we really need to be looking at this.
If I could, if I could respond to that, absolutely. You're, you're right in pointing that out. I'm sorry I didn't point that out earlier, but you're absolutely right. The, the numbers are there. Again, it is a baseline year for us. Literacy is a component of Common Core standards that may not have existed fully and they're the previous standards. But another thing to note here is that the, the rigor and the expectations around math has increased dramatically relative to ELA. When we're talking about depths of knowledge, the previous iteration of standardized testing largely tested in the recall and, and, and that's largely where it, where it stayed. With this, this new version of S-Back, we are now talking about a complex thinking and critical thinking, unlike anything that the previous assessments could, could muster or had the technological ability to, to create. So, and, and that's just a few of the changes. Beyond that, obviously, there's, there's, there's a whole lot more. But those are also important things to note along with, with your point about literacy.
Any more questions? A lot of data, exactly what we need though, to be, to be data-driven, right? Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you both.
Just to note, we are not going to be covering H, excuse me, I-5 and I-6. We'll do I-4 and I-7. I-4 is student service annual report.
Well, we have Ms., soon to be Ms. Fran Wagonek coming back. And Ms. Wooster-Dorfman is joining you. Are you flying solo?
No, I am flying solo without my, without my team today.
A lot of data tonight.
A lot of data. So I think I will follow the, what we just did with the previous report. And I think we'll see, you'll see some good things here. I know you've had the opportunity to see some of this. So we'll go through the slides and I'll allow you to ask questions as we go through. We're going to cover out of class referrals first. I, I want to say that there, before we dive into the data, that we, we have a couple of things in play here. of things in play here. First is restorative approaches and I think you'll see that bear out in the, in the data. And then also our transitions between the student information services and just how things got reported may account for, for that. I think it's a combination of those two. Also, before we dive in, just remembering that 2012, 13 was Santa Barbara Junior High School's pilot year for restorative approaches. 2013, 14 was Santa Barbara High School and the, for junior high schools. And then 2014, 15 was the, the remaining high schools joined in as we're looking. So you can see we had a, a decline in out of class referrals, which is always a good thing because if students are in class, that means they have a greater chance of learning. So we like to see that. We saw drops regardless of socioeconomic status. We saw even a greater drop with our SED students. This is a great slide, in my opinion, that the most dramatic drop was in our number of Hispanic or Latino students who were given out of class referrals, but we had a drop amongst white students as well. And for me, everything that we're, we're looking for in our data in this report is, is looking at our disproportionality and we, we know that, I mean, that's the reason why we dove into restorative approaches and so we're looking for the narrowing of that gap and, and we're seeing that. In special education, I think that's the one area where we still aren't seeing in all areas in terms of, of discipline, we're, we're not seeing the movement yet that we want to. That gives us something to focus on. As we go into, any questions on out of class referrals? Trend is still good, or trending down, so the 377 I wanted to note, that's the total number of students who received at least one suspension and the 513 is the total number of suspensions. I want to do a little foreshadowing to a year from now when I report, I think you're going to see an increase in the number of in-school suspensions and a decrease in the number of out-of-school suspensions. That's one thing that I'm working with the assistant principals on is when can we keep this, have them be official suspensions for things we have to suspend for, but can we keep the student in school and how do we do that? We have grade span here, still seeing drops. Socioeconomic status, again, much like the out-of-class suspensions, SED we saw a drop and a narrowing of that gap. Race, ethnicity, same story.
Can I ask a question about that one?
Absolutely.
More of a comment.
Mm-hmm.
So next year when we present this, it might be really helpful to look at that number, let's say 274, I can, I can quickly look at it in terms of that number and figure out that we have 58, 59% Latino students in our district, which is about 7,000 some odd students, give or take. So I could take 274, you know, use the denominator and figure out, okay, what that percentage? That might be really helpful too in the future.
Percentage of total Latinos.
Number of Hispanic students, that number being the top and the other one being the denominator.
Okay.
So that, if we're looking at that percent, well, how many Latino students are being suspended? What's the percent of Latino students being suspended? Because this number is great if we're looking at that comparison between Hispanic and white, but if we're looking at it as a percent of our total student population who's Latino, that would be interesting.
Within the demographics.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Looked at our language proficiency. Special education, and this is another one where, as Dr. Paz said, when we're looking at the total number of, it would be good, I think, reflecting on that to see, you know, what percentage is that of our special education students who are being, being suspended? And I think our actual rate is about 35% of our suspensions are students with IEPs, which is disproportionality. We move on to expulsions and the recommendations moving forward. We saw a spike in this past year. Forty-six recommendations, 31 of those went to expulsion. The 15 that did not move forward were because of manifestation determinations, the, that's, that's how we resulted with the 31.
Mr. Herron, if I may?
Yes.
Just on that, it would be, I think it'd be helpful in this piece to look at state data, like compare us to other districts, I think that'd be useful.
Like districts.
Yeah, like districts.
Okay. One thing to comment on with the, with the expulsions is really having the schools ask that question, do we have to recommend for expulsion? And that's a difficult, it's, it's a difficult mind shift, but I want to report that the schools are doing really great work in terms of, you know, talking it through with their team, talking with me and saying, is this something that we have to expel for and, or, or can we use other means? Should we use other means? And, and having those, you know, really working through that. So we see that we, we wanted to see the disproportionality narrow and we're seeing that as evidenced by the, the blue bar trending down. Same thing with our SED population, we're trending down in terms of both our recommendations and our, our expulsions. Trended down with our English learners. And in terms of pure expulsions, we saw a little, little bit of movement with our special ed population last year. So we've, we've seen a little movement each year. Drug and alcohol-related offenses, controlled substance, 48, 900C violations predominate both our suspensions and expulsions, again, in 2015, 16. And most of that is for possession or use of a controlled substance. We did see a bit of an increase.
And, and Mr. Herron, if I may, the, this is another one where it'd be interesting to see longer-term data because of some changes that we made.
Five-year data perhaps, or?
Pardon?
Five-year.
Yeah, maybe five years. I mean, I think it would be important to go back and look, like, when did we change board policy in terms of discipline? When did we bring in the, the drug dogs and things like that? That would be kind of interesting to look at it in comparison to that.
So again, these are all for, still for drug offenses. And then the RA implementation results. These are perhaps the, the most compelling, I think, the data. I mean, the data is for the most part good, but as you can see, we are, we want those, we want those two to touch, we want the, the 70% to actually be 62%. So we're trending down in terms of the number, or the percentage of suspensions. And, and we're getting there. So we're narrowing that gap. Here are the out-of-school suspensions at sites that are implementing the RA. And it was good to see that we had this movement in the year when we implemented at the larger high schools because that's really was, it was unclear what we were going to see. And so we did see that our disproportionality started to narrow, especially with our Hispanic And then this is our best slide of all because we have proportionality in terms of the demographics of expulsions at the sites that are implementing the RA. So essentially, because most of our expulsions do happen in secondary for the most part, I think we had four expulsions in elementary last year that we, we did for the, we pretty much hit proportionality, which is, which is nice to see. It's never good to see expulsions, but if we have to see them, at least we have proportionality, I appreciate your comments, I, I think those are well taken and, and we can definitely look at, we'll do that for next year. And we can provide you with whatever format you want to see the data in. Any questions?
Ms. Parker?
I just wanted to say how much I appreciated this coming to us and also, you know, your previous presentation specifically on restorative approaches and how you would be measuring its success, the metrics around restorative approaches and the focus groups and surveys you're going to be doing, especially in light of, I don't know if you had a chance to see the LA Times article yesterday?
I was going to say the LA Times article.
And seeing how LA unified, I mean, I, you know, they're such a different bear than we are, but they appear to clearly have done everything backwards and different from the way we did it in terms of rolling it out slowly. But I also think it's very important to keep in mind, and I feel like your surveys and, and focus groups will get at this, the idea of, are we still, you know, it's wonderful to have reduced suspension rates, it's wonderful to have proportionality, but are teachers feeling supported and is classroom management such that our students are all still learning and focused? And I'm, I'm really so grateful when I was looking at that article going, oh, I'm glad that we are looking at that in depth and, and we will have some answers to that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And, and I'm glad you brought that up because I was actually going to mention that, that, that we have the data and the data is, what we have here is good, but I really feel like the, the research that Dr. Guillermo Juan and Ms. Wooster-Dorfman are, are taking part in, that's, that's going to tell us those other pieces, you know, how are teachers feeling about, how are students feeling about, et cetera? And I did want to report back that based on the, the input from the last meeting that we will be having fewer focus groups, still probably not as few as might, you might have wanted, but we are finding some ways to work around that and to slightly minimize the number of focus groups. We, we heeded that request. I appreciate it. So, any other questions?
Ms. Ramone.
I have to chuckle.
You stifled their work.
Do we have any information about students who, is the word reoffend or what's the word?
Crucitivism?
I guess, yeah. And do we, do we know what that looks like? You know, here is students, because I look at some of this and there, I'm trying to figure out, there's some instances where there's certain things that are done that require us to suspend and expel because of their severity without restorative approaches.
Right.
And then there's instances where, where we have tried everything and we have done restorative approaches and then we still have to expel. So I'm just trying to figure out if there's anything there that's worth looking at as far as our students who?
How many times did we?
Like, how many times did we try restorative approaches? Like, does it work? Not that we can ever say it works on the first time or on the second time, but I'm just curious if there's any data that tells us anything about that.
The only thing we had from this data that's close to that is really the fact that we had 360-some students who offended one time, but we had 500 and number, 500 and X number overall, so we would have had that. We, I mean, we can pull that data out for sure, that, that, that we can figure out when Dr. Guillermo Juan comes back from Chicago.
No, or I mean, or just even for next year, yeah.
But it is interesting because we want to know, you know, that's another layer of RA that we want to look at and say, yeah, it really works, or it works on these things and it doesn't work as well on these things.
Yes.
And so that's another, as we go through this, this process of evaluating that, that's something we can do.
And, and again, maybe for next year, not so much for this year, but I'm just thinking, like, was there something else that the data can tell us or help us think about?
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Again, another great report. We'll jump now to I seven, presentation of kindergarten readiness.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Really want to thank Ms. Robertson for making her way here tonight because she was at a board meeting earlier tonight as a board member and is really pulling double duty. So thank you for being here, Michelle.
Thank you. I did have to leave closed session, so, but I left him in a quorum, so we're good. So we're last but not least, and thank you again for accommodating, putting me last so I could do double duty.
That's the first time I've heard that.
Yeah. If you can remember, the first year I was here, I went on at 11 o'clock at night, so this is, this is fine, 9 o'clock. So, thank you. So I'm here to show you the 15, 16 KSEP scores. All right. So just a brief reminder of what KSEP is, it's the kindergarten student entrance profile. It's a screening tool used to look at the readiness of children in terms of are they ready to fully participate in the kindergarten curriculum on day one? It really looks at two domains of readiness. One is school-ready knowledge, which is basic cognitive skills, numbers, shapes, et cetera. And the second is social emotional readiness, which really looks at the intra and interpersonal skills needed to really thrive in a school culture. For the 15, 16 school year, we screened 562 kindergartners. The schools that did not participate were Peabody, Adelante and Santa Barbara Charter Schools, so we don't have any data for them. So data shows that about 37% of our children entered ready this year, 34% entered at what we call almost ready or monthly monitor, which means they maybe missed one, possibly two indicators, that they could have been at the ready level, but they maybe just missed a couple. And then about 29% indicated that they needed monthly to immediate intervention. So it's really important to note that if you take the ready scores and the monthly monitor scores together, that's really more of an indicator of the total school readiness, so about 71% of our children were not in need of any intervention. Here's three years' worth of data. This slide represents data beginning in 2013, 14, because that was the first year that we implemented KSEP district-wide. Prior to that, we were only monitoring Harding and then McKinley Elementary, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. We always look at three years' worth of data. We always look at three years' worth of data, because the baseline really needs to be averaged for about that time. You can see, for example, last year's scores seemed higher than this year. However, if we take the ready and almost ready scores again together, we see some consistency across the three years. So for thirteen, fourteen, it was about sixty-seven percent. Fourteen, fifteen, it was seventy-nine, so that was our peak year. And then fifteen, sixteen, about seventy-one. So our average baseline is about seventy-two percent. This equates to about a hundred-and-fifty-eight students each year not entering kindergarten ready. And out of those hundred-and-fifty-eight, thirty-four needed that immediate intervention. I know this is always an interesting slide to people. This is really a deeper dive into the subgroups that you've been hearing about probably all night or since four o'clock this afternoon. It's no surprise, it's pretty much in alignment with what our past CST scores and our new smarter balance scores are reporting. Our English language learners and socioeconomic disadvantaged students across the district seem to score lower on the KSEP. So before they even enter our system, they're already showing signs of needing intervention. So those are the subgroups that we will continue to focus on and put our resources toward in the future.
Can I ask, before you leave the slide, SRK and SER?
I knew someone was going to ask me that. So it's school-ready knowledge and social-emotional readiness. So you could see that our scores on school-ready knowledge are higher than social-emotional. And we will talk about that also. Also, you're probably wondering, how did our own kids do who are in our system? So at fifteen, sixteen, a hundred-and-ninety-three of those five-hundred-and-sixty-two kindergartners came from our TK classrooms. And two-hundred-and-thirteen came directly out of our Santa Barbara School District state preschools. So that equals about thirty-four percent are TK and thirty-eight percent are state preschool. That means that SBUSD actually has the greatest influence on kindergarten readiness than any of our other community partners that feed into our district combined. So it's a lot of pressure on us. So how did we do in terms of our state preschool? We actually were just slightly higher than the average of the district. So with thirty-seven percent district-wide ready to go, we were about thirty-four percent. But if you combine the two again, then we were a little bit higher, just about three percent. This is significant, though, because the children enrolled in our state preschool programs are ninety-five percent Hispanic, sixty percent English language learners, and one-hundred percent socio-economically disadvantaged. So the strides that we're making in the preschool are really making a difference. So I'm confident that the Early Education and Support Strategic Plan I presented to you last spring means we're on the right track. This is a breakdown of how our elementary schools look. You can see that Cleveland, Franklin, McKinley, and then Santa Barbara Community Academy down here are really our focus areas. This is how we really determine our resources out of the Community of Schools grant and our early childhood component of that. While we still have work to do in those areas, don't get discouraged, because I do want you to celebrate something. So Franklin went from seventeen percent ready to go in thirteen, fourteen, to twenty-eight percent. That's a pretty significant leap. McKinley went from twenty percent ready in twelve, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, to thirty-seven percent this year. And Harding, which is our superstar, went from fourteen percent ready in oh-nine, oh-ten to forty-one percent in fifteen, sixteen. So all of the efforts that we've been making through the years are making a difference there. Cleveland's my anomaly, because last year they were at fifty percent ready, and this year they're at twenty-two percent. So I'll be working with Principal Sandoval to kind of look at that a little bit closer.
And while you're on that slide, what about the Community Academy?
So the Community Academy is harder for us to focus on, because those students come from all over the place. There's not really a school boundary that we can really pinpoint a lot of effort on. So, you know, we used to have a preschool there, but facility issues caused us to have to close it. So something to look at, though. Okay, so the final point I wanted to make about the data is that when we, we look at the two domains and they're disaggregated, we've made the most strides in school-ready knowledge. In two thousand fourteen, fifteen, we had fifty-six percent of the kindergarten students mastering school-ready knowledge. This year, we're at forty-nine, so I think we're still on the right track there. There has been a strong intentional effort on our part to increase the quality of our programming and the vertical alignment of standards between pre-K, TK, and K. So I think that's part of why those are remaining higher. The scores that concern me and probably will concern you are the social-emotional readiness scores of our students. This has consistently been our biggest hurdle. We've put concerted effort into supporting the child's development in this area, but we have yet to take a closer look as to whether our elementary schools are actually ready for the children that they're receiving. And that's part of that whole bigger cultural proficiency conversation, part of developmentally appropriateness for K. And I know that my colleagues here are going to speak to that in a few minutes. So our continued effort to improve is, again, the Office of Early Education and Support Strategic Plan as our roadmap. Also, this year, we will be completing our national accreditation process through NAEYC, which is the National Association for the Education of Young Children. So we'll be having accreditation assessors visit us beginning as early as February. We'll conclude that assessment period window by June, and then we'll have our results by fall. And then, at this time, I'd like to introduce our two Kindergarten Readiness Network chairs for the fifteen, sixteen school year, and they will talk about the network's efforts for this year. So Teri Allison and Veronica Gallardo.
Good evening, Dr. Cash, Dr. Droudi, Dr. Ramirez, and members of the board. It's like nine fifteen, and you guys have been looking at data for a really long time. But this is probably the most important group. And moving the needle is really the power zero-to-eight. So everything you guys saw, and, you know, it's interesting for me to sit back there as a teacher, as a board member at City College, as a parent, and thinking of all the questions that I would have for Dr. Ramirez following all your presentations. But really, I think our efforts with the Kindergarten Readiness Network have really been to leverage the power of our community, of the zero-to-eight community, and to say, can we move the needle? And if so, how can we do this? The social-emotional area that you see there, that's of concern. It's a big concern, because we often talk about, oh, are the kids ready for school? Well, at one of our network meetings, I believe it was John Clark, and he really challenged us. He said, you know, why are we talking about what we need? You know, in the hospitals, we talked about the patient model, right? What does the patient need? And so if we're saying that we are here, and I was reading the mission, you know, and it's like, okay, well, we're here to set high expectations and a commitment to excellence. Well, you guys can Google, and you can find an array of just pedagogical, methodological things that work for kids at the kindergarten TK level. So if that's our commitment, then I think that we're going to make gains in that social-emotional area. If we know that the kids are needing support, not cognitively, but socially, emotionally, then we need to put all our creative thinking into providing an excellent environment for them. They're not going to reach their full potential, even if Common Core says that in kindergarten you have to count by one hundred, and you have to have fluency within ten, and that you have to read emerging level texts, and that you have to read, and I taught kindergarten, so I know these standards. They're not going to reach their full potential if they're not coming to the table, coming to the rug ready. And I think that that's where the network is coming, to have these larger conversations. I'm now in first grade, and I will tell you that the kids that were not ready in kindergarten are still struggling in first grade. And that is of concern. Again, you can Google what the reading scores for a third grader and what their trajectory and what their path will be on different factors. So from the Santa Barbara Unified standpoint, being a teacher with the district, and then Teri being out in the community, I think that the network is one of your best public-private partnerships that we have right now. But we're really coming to the table with the support of our administrators to say, what is it that our kids need? These are your youngest students. And rigor, relevance, that's all great stuff. But these kids are never going to get their childhood back. So for us to provide an environment where they will reach their full potential to be responsible, ethical, productive citizens in a diverse and changing world, which we don't even know what that's going to look like when they graduate from high school, that's where our commitment needs to be right now. And that's going to take a lot of creative conversations. I know the network's having them already. Michelle is doing a great job leading our preschool, and certainly Dr. Ramirez inviting us to the table to really get creative about what our kids need. And in many schools, that's looked like Calm coming in to partner, to provide the counseling, their reflective practice and different things like that. But there's a lot of, there's a lot of room to grow. And there is also a lot of opportunity for us to look at kids, not just at McKinley and Franklin, which I've taught, but now at Roosevelt. I think that the biggest eye-opener going to the Upper East Side was that, guess what? All our parents, regardless of how much money they make, all care for their kids. They're all at a loss. The mom that's working two, three jobs to pay her rent is just as busy as the mom who's a lawyer or an accountant and serving on PTA boards and volunteering in the community. These are all families that just want the best for their kids. So, so yeah, I think that that's why I'm here after teaching all day at nine fifteen at night, to tell you guys that we believe in the network and the work that they're doing, and to just encourage you guys that when you look at that data, think zero-to-eight. Think of those babies in the classroom. Think that TK is not kindergarten. Think that kindergarten is not first grade. And know that first grade still has a developmental span where kids still can have till eight years old to learn, to develop, what they need to learn.
So I just want, good evening, everybody. I just wanted to let you know kind of what we're doing. So the Kindergarten Miss Ready Network, we're getting together monthly. We'd love to have you come and to one of our meetings. They're on Tuesday afternoons. Are we going to be at Roosevelt again next Tuesday? We're going to be at Washington, but I can have Michelle forward you that. But what we are are preschool directors, kindergarten teachers, TK teachers, first-grade teachers. And we get together and we talk about what's happening in our respective silos to actually work with children and families to make that transition a little bit easier. So this year, we did a little survey at the end of the year with our members, and we're really focused on helping that transition, helping the whole family transition from preschool into kindergarten. And we're looking at a lot of different ways, like opening up community, opening up community schools, having preschool teachers and preschool faculty actually work with kindergarten teachers and say, these kids are coming to you, and here's what we know about them. And really taking a systematic look at how we can help families, especially the ones that may not have a lot of experience in a large school system, how we can support them moving forward. So it's been really a nice partnership, and just the fact that we get together and talk about what we do. And, you know, on paper and in different things, it might look like we're really far apart, but we're all looking at early childhood development as zero-to-eight. So I'm encouraging you to think that even your third graders are early childhood, and their brains are still really developing. And there's a huge span of normal there, or typical developing. And, you know, as we go forward, we want to really make that partnership so that the families that are coming to you and the families that the early childhood educators are preparing to come to you are really smoothly transitioned so that everybody succeeds. So it's been a really great partnership. And so thank you to my coworkers for doing that, so.
Okay, questions?
Ms. Parker?
I just want to say thank you so much, and keep up the good work. I just feel like it's been pretty revolutionary, just starting the conversation and having this partnership going on. So many great opportunities, so thank you.
We discussed that in my groups, that the single plans. And hearing some of the responses to what children need at the young age fits right into what you're talking about, and it's fantastic. Really appreciate it. And I know you have the support of the board, that's for sure, and the staff, but the board for sure. Dr. Paz?
Yeah, and I was going to comment the same thing and say, you know, we spent the first part of our meeting talking about single plans in my discussions with them when it was related to KSEP. The plan that mentioned that was to see if we could align all of those pieces that need to happen, starting with pre-K. And then saying, so now what are you going to do? As an elementary principal, are you taking that information? What are you going to do with it? And then continuing that as a continuum to junior high and then to high school. If you were here, I don't know if, Michelle, you were here when I mentioned to both Dr. Droudi and Dr. Ramirez about seeing if there could be this synergy that could take place between elementary and secondary principals and, you know, start lining that up. And I think my comment even to the EC Strategic Plan is not to treat it as something that's out there, but to really look at it as the pathway that really needs to begin with pre-K and that continues through elementary and continues to junior high and to high school. Because ultimately, there are kids, regardless of, you know, even the ones that didn't attend our state preschool are our kids. And that we need to be ready for them in that sense of being prepared for the kids who are differentially prepared. They're not all coming the same way. And how are we going to be prepared as a school, a school district, as staff, to be able to work with all children of different abilities? And whether they're typical or not typical, and they come with whatever, they need to be prepared. And I think that, for me, it's thinking about it in that way. You know, the perspective, not just looking at it, you know, K through eight or zero through eight. It's K through twelve, because I have to look at it that way. Because it will show up even at the twelfth grade, you know? What happened to you at K? You know, what happened to your pre-K?
Yeah, so ideally, there would not be an Office of Early Education and Support Strategic Plan. All of those strategies would be in a single-site plan, because all of those campuses have preschools. So really, it should all just be aligned and in there, yeah, so.
And one of the things that happens is that, you know, that ideal learning... I usually don't even need a mic. That, you know, learning takes, the best learning happens in the context, all learning happens in the context of relationships. And so as we build relationships with each other, you know, then we're building relationships that foster learning. So if we're in silos, we have no relationships. So, you know, we're building those relationships and modeling, working together, so.
Ms. Ramon?
So I also want to thank you for your work. I think it's very important. And as we were having the discussions about our single-site plans, I don't think that there was a table where we didn't actually talk about zero to three and then three to eight, and it kept coming up, regardless of whether you were an elementary principal or a junior high or high school principal. So I think it just really reflects that there is an understanding that this is really important, and it's a very important age group for us, if we are, as I think it was said, if we're going to kind of sway, try to close the gap. The other thing that I appreciate hearing was the fact and the recognition that despite anything we do, there are barriers to learning for our students, and that that's a recognition. And sometimes those barriers are not related to literacy or to math skills or to vocabulary. There's other barriers that our students come with, and I think that that's really important, because sometimes they're not part of the discussion. So I'm glad that they're part of this discussion and that we're having this conversation, and whether it's social-emotional needs or others, they're important. needs or others, they're important considerations in order to help our students learn. So I appreciate the work and the reflection, the time that you've all invested. I love the idea of really making this a community partnership and not just a district initiative, so thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it very much. Okay, common events. I have a couple. For a reminder, we have the groundbreaking Green Shade on the 20th at 10 o'clock. We have the annual Maintenance Department breakfast on the 23rd at 7:00 a.m. at the Santa Barbara High School cafeteria.
So that, that, that has recently been changed to November 20th.
Oh, okay. So the Maintenance Department is November 20th?
That's correct.
At 7:00 a.m.
Can we get an email about that?
Yeah, you'll get all of that.
Okay. And, and then just a note, Ms. Ramirez, Dr. Ramirez, Special Education Day is December 2nd. So I hope we recognize our special education teachers and all that they do for us and give them a special thank you on that day. Rodriguez, oh God, I get you, I'm sorry. Yeah, the December 2nd. And then personal note, the district is having CIF playoffs. We have two high schools, Santa Barbara High School and then San Marcos, starting their playoffs, playoffs on Thursday down in Corona Riverside. So may the best team win.
No.
No, that's water polo. There is something other than football in this town, you know? Okay.
It's a lot.
Water polo, no, that, I don't think the high school teams made it at the CIF for football.
Next year.
Next year, yeah. But this is water polo. Yeah, very important. And with that, oh, future agenda items. And with that, for the very last time, thankfully, I get to say, we're closed. I've been practicing that all week.